Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for November the 13th. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Pearson, here. Commissioner Warnock?
Here.
Commissioner Braun?
Yeah.
Commissioner Arthurreath?
Here.
Mayor Marion?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all the elected bodies in attendance.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, on behalf of our citizens, God, and on behalf of our elected body. I ask that you watch over us and protect us, God. I ask that you watch over our citizens, our law enforcement, God, our first responders, as well as our troops serving here and overseas as well, God. Please put your hand on them and protect them. I ask that you be with us as we're here tonight and as we get ready to leave this evening. In Jesus' name, amen. First on the agenda is town meeting minutes, and that is from a November the 3rd special town meeting. The, it's not this. Okay. Calvin, do we have that for approval, the town meeting minutes from the November 3rd special meeting?
Oh, here it is. Got it. Let it be remembered that the Mayor and Board of Commissioners, oh, actually, do we?
No, you don't have to read that.
All right, you reviewed it. Do you guys have any questions?
No.
All right, can I get a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the meeting.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion regarding the meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving into the executive session, which was on October the 23rd, 2018. Commissioner Warnock, do you have that report?
Yes. So I'll read this one. October 23rd, 2018, at 8:16 PM on the second floor, actually, the third floor of Town Hall. Oh, no, the second floor, I'm sorry, the second floor of Town Hall. Those in attendance were Commissioner Arthurreath, Commissioner Braun, Commissioner Pearson, Commissioner Warnock. That night, Mayor Marion was, had an excused absence for the meeting. The motion to hold an executive session was made by Commissioner Pearson and was seconded by Commissioner Warnock. That motion passed four to zero. Citation of authority, purpose, "to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluations, evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matters that affect one or more specific individuals." Topics discussed, sealed as provided before by Section G below. Persons present at closed session other than elected body. Calvin A. Bonnenberger Jr., Town Administrator. Action number one, sealed as provided for in Section G below. Action number two, sealed as provided for in Section G below. Seal the minutes of the meeting. Motion made by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Pearson. Vote of elected body to leave executive session four to zero, I'm sorry, the, the seal of minutes, four to zero. Leave executive session, Commissioner Pearson, seconded by Commissioner Braun, passed four to zero. Adjourn the meeting, Commissioner Pearson, seconded by Commissioner Warnock, four to zero. Meeting adjourned at 10:14 PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Can I get a motion to approve the executive session minutes?
So moved.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving into public presentations. Commissioner Warnock, do you want to introduce the scout?
Alan, are you ready? Hang on. Calvin, are you ready? Whoever. Alan, I mean, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
That's great. Calvin, if you're ready.
It's loading.
Okay.
It's spinning.
You want to do a brief introduction?
Yeah, so, I'd like to introduce Eagle Scout, actually, I believe you're, are you still candidate, or have you candidate? Okay.
Yeah.
Daniel Few, he has completed a boardwalk in Veterans Community Park of Rising Sun, so the Woodlands Boardwalk in the very back of the new trail system, he completed, I want to say around July or August.
Yeah.
The summers kind of blurred together at this point, but, and there was a little bit of the completed trail work on either end of it that you completed sometime, I think about September. So, the, this is his presentation of what was built at the park, and we're still waiting for it to load, I guess.
It's still loading.
So, well, I guess if you want to go ahead and, it's loading there for you.
Okay. Okay.
Technology.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what troop from pack you're with?
I'm with Troop 92. It is located in Clora, Maryland. It's also a little ways away.
Yep, it's close by. It's always good to see scouts here. Are you here with your family tonight?
Yes, they're over there.
Thank you for having a scout involved with all the projects that Commissioner Warnock will find for him to do.
This is our second eagle.
Oh, nice, congratulations.
I didn't get ahold of the first one.
You'll be the second eagle. The first one did his project at the American Legion. Our older son Christopher redid all the picking tables outside.
Oh, wow, that's awesome.
He's the one that did that project.
Now, is that a arrow of light on your?
No, this is a Order of the Arrow.
Okay.
Arrow light is this one right here.
Do you have that one?
Yeah.
I didn't do scouts when I was younger, but I understand that's a big accomplishment for you guys.
Well, they were my pack leaders for most of it, so.
Nice.
Well, we're very, you guys are very, you know, very grateful that families stay involved in this, and to the parents that usually wind up being pack leaders and out there selling popcorn and everything in the cold weather, you know, thank you so much for doing all that. It's definitely a family event and family affair.
Just bear with us for one moment while we try to get that pulled up.
Your parents are in technical difficulties.
Do you plan on doing some more projects for us next time?
Yeah, why not?
Sure.
Mr. Warnock needs help over there.
Do you have any other brothers involved?
Uh, no, only one brother.
Other siblings? This is it for you.
Because I know, I know one of the families that Dave has contracted, has got the whole family, I think three brothers and a sister.
Triplettes.
So. Front page of the Herald next week.
Oh, you're laying out the paper now?
I'm just making suggestions. I think that would be a great front page picture. What school do you attend?
I go to Rising Sun.
Give it ten minutes.
I'm currently a senior.
What are your plans for next, for after high school?
My plan to go to Cecil for two years, then transfer out to a four-year college.
Nice, sounds like you've got a good plan. What are you going to study?
Graphic design slash game design.
Yeah? So that's a good business these days. Good luck.
Is it going to be a few minutes, Commissioner Warnock?
It's opening, it's just.
Must be a big file, lot of work.
I think it's like eight or nine slides.
There you go.
There we go. Boardwalk in the woods, that's a cool picture. That's the section of woods that he did, no.
No, it is not. I was going to say, you've been doing a great job, that's what it looks like. All right, so, I, of course, as the title ensures, I made a boardwalk in the woods. Next slide, please. I think you can just hit space, there you go. And so, this is the initial design. It was originally, put a 60-foot boardwalk, with around the footy foot would be the turn, but that eventually evolved into more like a curve than just a straight, just 90-degree turn, but the initial process of it. Next slide, please. And so, before we even got to work, I met up, me, I brought my dad out with me, we met up with Mr. Warnock, we scoped out the area and discussed what we're going to do with the days to come. Next slide, please. So, the first day, I got a bunch of people, volunteers from my troop, to help out, and we framed and built the first two large sections of the project, which was about the, about forty feet, feet, of course, feet of planking. And so, next slide. On the second day, we finished, like, the framing of it, and we started working on the corner piece, and that piece took a while because of the, each board had to be individually, like, measured and cut to fit different lengths. And next slide. And the third day, we finished those sections and finished the rest of the planking of the boardwalk and prepared for the ramps. Next slide. And the last day of the project, we finished the ramps and, along with handy crap, we started doing a little bit more mulching, and that's why they have shovels. Trust me, they're not going to the ground, they're putting stuff on top of it, just to make that sure. All right, and, next slide. And that is what the finished product looks like.
Wow, that looks great.
Except there's a little bit more, I, we went back, because he said, I went back in September, because there's a little bit more mulching needed to be done, so I grabbed my brother and me and him did that in a couple hours and finished up the mulching.
That's great.
That's really good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, and that is it.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Few? Hearing none. Thank you so much for coming.
Oh yeah, I forgot the, thank you. I forgot there was another couple slides. So, thank you, Mr. Warnock, for all the help you've given me, the knowledge, advice, and manual labor.
Huh.
And, you know, if you ever need me, just call, because I know you have a lot more projects.
Anything.
And I believe there might be one more.
Do some mulching in your flower beds.
There you go, that's it. Oh, that, okay, it broke. Gotcha.
Do you remember what you were going to say? Troop 92?
Yeah, well, it's like, it was supposed to be on like, one line, but apparently, like...
It might have been when we downloaded it to PowerPoint.
Probably. All right, well, it's supposed to say Daniel Few, Life Scout, and then Troop 92, Clora, Maryland, but it's kind of cut off, but that was it.
Well, thank you so much for coming out. Thank you both for all your help and support for doing this, most definitely. I know that boardwalk will be enjoyed, and once we dedicate it, we'll have to invite you to come back out once we dedicate that whole trail system.
Yep, we're, that was actually, this set of projects were the last projects for that trail system and park, so we are now just down to surfacing, and then we'll hopefully be doing some ribbon cuttings and stuff, maybe, probably in the spring.
That's great.
And then, we'll have, like, some one-site, we're actually going to do, like, a walking ribbon cutting. We're going to go to each project and ribbon cutting for each of the scouts and so on. So, and, so you'll have to come out when we do that, obviously, but.
We'll make sure we send you an invitation.
Yeah, and I would like to actually thank Daniel's parents, Jeff and Trish, they were there every step of the way. I mean, like, we fortunately didn't have as bad a weather as the house triplets had, the house triplets, I think it rained if we, like, scheduled, we just finally just said, you know, we're going to work in the rain, because we had no other choice, but, so our weather was a lot better.
Yeah.
But it was still a little muddy and, and over there a few times. The reason he brought up the shovel was, we emphasized that it was a section of spot wetlands, and while we can build on top of it, we couldn't dig into it. So, where it transitions back to trail is outside of the spot wetlands, so it's actually areas that we could fill, although some of those areas, we had to fill with natural materials because of the sensitive nature of the area we're working in, so. But, thank you for all your hard work.
And you don't have to say the whole meeting, you guys can sneak out if you want to, because I'm sure we'll try to bore you to death.
I thought she was going to stay for the rest of the meeting.
All right, we're going to move into business meeting items. Resolution 2018-09, which is the fee schedule bulk pickup, Town Administrator.
Before we proceed, just for the record, on page one of three, in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, whereas, the number was, on your document is 55, that should be 50, so I've made the change on the screen here. So, with that said, what we, what you have before you, we talked about this at the last town meeting, and it's been a discussion going around, going on for a while now, and the resolution pretty much explains it, but in a nutshell, when we put the trash bids out for bid this last cycle, none of the companies that provided bids were willing to do certain services that had been done for free in the past. And one of those was bulk pickup, which bulk pickup is essentially an extra service provided by the town on a weekly basis. Other communities might do it once a quarter or every other month, the town was doing it on a weekly basis. And the trash haulers, we had proposal prices of anywhere from $50 per each item to $55 per each item. And the resolution is going to explain how the town saw a $58,000 increase in the cost of providing trash collection to begin with, and that was just for curbside collection itself. And an additional $21,000 increase of services that are on an as-need basis. Case in point would be yard waste collection, things like that, where it's, depending upon the time of the year, it's not a weekly pickup. So those numbers float there, but based upon what our best guess estimate was in the bid specifications, we estimate an additional $21,000 increase. All those services were done for free in the past, so let me really quantify that. The service of bulk pickup was free in the past. The services of dumpsters at Veterans Park, Diddy Richards Park, and the sewer plant were all for free in the past. Dumpsters at the fire company were free, the town pays for that. Dumpsters at the Little League field, the town pays for that, those were free. And we saw significant increases in yard waste collection fees. So all in all, in the first year alone, we're incurring another $79,000 increase in costs. And as we've talked about before, in the budget process, we try to balance the budget and get all the services in place, and we always balance it on anywhere from $4,000 to $15,000 surpluses, so to speak. So, $79,000 of new additional costs, we had to take a look at where some of those costs should be borne by the individuals asking for them. And I know it's, we're going to talk about it in the resolution, but I think it's important to really make this clear, is that trash pickup for, curbside pickup for all of our residents is a benefit or a service that's shared equally by all residents. So, all the property owners pay for that pickup, for the curbside collection of trash and recyclables, but not everybody requires the need for a bulk pickup, whether they're getting rid of a couch, a chair, sofa, whatever. Not everyone needs that service. So, the additional cost associated with this service now means that people that are not requiring this special service are actually paying for this special service. So the concept here is to treat this as an extra service that a resident can ask to have or not ask to have, but it's not fair for all of the residents to pick up the cost for that. So this resolution is basically passing the cost from the trash hauler directly to the property owner that is requesting that specific service. So, in looking at the resolution, we have the standard boilerplate language. At the beginning, it's Resolution 2018-09, whereas Chapter 9, titled Finance, Taxation, Business, and Trade of the Town's Code of Ordinance, contains Article 6, titled Establishment of a Town Fee Schedule, which provides for the creation of a town fee schedule established by resolution and amended from time to time by the Mayor and Commissioners. And whereas currently, the town provides trash recyclables collection for residential properties located within the incorporated limits of the Town of Rising Sun. And whereas part of this collection program includes the pickup of bulk items, which typically include sofas, chairs, tables, toilets, kitchen cabinets, carpeting, mattresses, box springs, microwave ovens, dressers, picnic tables, bed frames, vacuum cleaners, fans, and any other solid waste item which is determined by the Town of Rising Sun to be considered a bulk item, but shall not include white goods such as washers, dryer, refrigerator, or freon containing appliances. And whereas the town was previously able to have these items collected by the contracted waste hauler, free of charge, with no additional charge to our residents. And whereas the town recently put the collection of trash and recyclables out to bid, and upon securing various responses from licensed waste haulers, realized a $58,000 increase in curbside trash recyclable collection, as well as a $21,400 increase in other trash collection services related to yard waste and dumpster disposal services, with all of these expenses expected to increase by roughly 9% each year over the next three years. And whereas part of the pricing now includes a new charge of $50 for each bulk item collected, and as such, this new charge is an additional charge on top of the increased pricing as detailed above. And whereas, although the service of curbside trash and recyclables collection is a general service equally shared by all residential properties, while bulk pickup is an additional service that is provided on an as-need basis, and as such, should be treated as any other special service charge. Therefore, being enacted and resolved, the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun are modifying the existing town fee schedule to reflect the policy of passing along the $50 charge from the waste hauler directly to any property that requests the additional services of picking up bulk items at their property. These changes highlighted in red can be found and identified on page 18 of the attached document titled 2018 Town of Rising Sun Fee Schedule, recommended updates 11/13/18. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on the 13th day of November 2018.
Can I get a motion on Resolution 2018-09?
So moved.
It's been motioned, can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I think the discussion that I would say is that, you know, this is a cost that Waste Management or our trash hauler has passed on to us, and we see this as something that if you decide to use bulk pickup, then you'll incur the charge. If you don't use the bulk pickup and decide to take it yourself, you won't incur the charge, because you're not using bulk pickup at that time. And discussing, and I think Calvin's going to talk a little bit more about this, we are exploring different options. Those could include maybe a fall cleanout or a spring cleanout day where the town provides some sort of dumpster and allows people to dump items free of charge on those certain times, and that's something that we're still discussing at this time. But unfortunately, that charge, like I said, was passed on from Waste Management and isn't coming directly from the town. Commissioner Warnock, did you have any?
No, you actually covered the point I was going to make.
There's a point I want to just emphasize, that this is per item, not per stop pickup. Okay, so if you put four or five items out, it's $50 per item, not $50 per stop for your pickup.
And again, we looked at different options of how to handle this, and we saw it as, if you use the service, then you'll incur the charge. Unfortunately, this is, again, a cost that Waste Management has passed on to us.
I will say, if you can find a way to fit it in your trash can, it's not a bulk item. I've gotten a whole dishwasher into one of those trash cans before. It took a hammer and a lot of tools to make it small enough to fit in a trash can, but...
But, we did everything we could when we, I know when we put this out to bid, to try to get the best price that we could for a trash hauler, and we did, but unfortunately, all of the bids came back with this as a charge. So, moving forward, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes, thank you. Calvin, any more discussion about the nonprofit trash collection and utility?
Yes, if we could for a second, before we get into that, I'd be remiss, and I didn't get a chance to talk to the board about it, as you can see, we have Judy Melton, the Town Clerk, sitting here. Going forward, she would be the one that would do the roll call and stuff like that. The other additional service we're going to, we're going to try incorporating this in the meetings, is because the town videotapes its meetings, it no longer has to do meeting minutes, and that's why you don't see them on the agenda, with the exception of the meeting we did tonight, because we didn't have the special meeting Saturday videotaped. One of the things we're going to try to do is to make it so people don't have to look at an agenda and say, the item that I want to see what the discussion was, was contained in this, this meeting, and then sit and look at the entire video. What Judy is doing is she is taking the agenda and she is putting timestamps of as we move to each item, new business, citizen's comment, there will all be a timestamp, and then we will put that on our website, so that if someone wants to look for a discussion item, that they want to see how it was handled at the meeting, they can use the timestamp that we'll now have on the agenda to help people to review meetings that way. So, that's what Judy's role will be here at the meetings. Moving forward to the discussion items about additional trash pickup, as I had mentioned, we have a pretty sizable increase in our trash collection. And one of the benefits of the way we do our contracts when we put them out to bid, is we always try to get someone to give us pricing three and four years out. And we've, we've done that since I've been here, where we have asked for a one-year contract, two-year, three-year, and four-year. And usually, the pricing for the four years comes out much better at the end of four years than what some of the other communities in Cecil County are getting, when we first did it, what we were getting. So it enables us to lock the hauler down into a long-term contract. And so the reason why we see such the big increase is because four years later, obviously, pricing has changed in the collection industry. Anyone watching the video who doesn't live in the town knows that in terms of when they take their trash to the Cecil County landfill and the recyclables, there's a big difference in the cost. And when we first entered into this contract back in 2012, the county was not charging for recyclables. So because of the way our contract was written, when the county started charging for recyclables, our residents didn't have to absorb that cost, because the contractor had agreed to a contract setting that price. So there's an example of where the four-year contract really protected the pricing for the residents, but now it's catching up to us. The costs that you, that you saw in our bids are no different than what the other communities are getting, and we did ask to go into a four-year contract, but we only committed to, the way we wrote the contract, is we have the right within 90 days to say, we want to go into the next year of the contract, or we don't like the service, or if we think we get better pricing, we can put the whole thing out to bid again. So I just wanted to explain to people some more background on this. As part of the additional, roughly $79,000 of additional cost, is increased cost in yard waste collection. And then, as I mentioned, all the dumpsters at the community parks are no longer free of charge. The town, at some potent, some certain time, it predates my arrival to the town, has paid for the dumpsters at the fire company, the dumpsters for the Little League, and one or two other nonprofits that the town pays for. I'm doing, you know, my duty of putting it towards you that if, if we're trying to look at cost savings, those are things that, over the years, I've had people ask, as another one, why do the churches not pay for their water bill? Why does the fire company not pay for the water bill? And I'm not making an opinion on whether or not we should or we shouldn't, I just think that it's prudent for the elected body to revisit all of those items and make, make a decision going forward. If we stay the way it is, fine, but if we decide to change, it's... But if we decide to change, it's probably better to have a discussion about it than to have some residents get very upset, because they don't realize that certain entities, the town is picking up the bill for those items. So, the other thing that we should probably have a discussion about going forward is, I don't think anybody really wanted to, to pass along the charge for bulk pickup. So we have entertained a variety of ideas on how we could still provide the service. And I think it's important for everyone watching to be able to hear some of the thought process. The one thing we thought about was having our own employees do it. But in order to do it, now you're talking about personnel, and you're talking about equipment needs, because we would right now be having, you know, how many people does it take to lift, lift up a couch and throw it in the back of a truck? We have pickup trucks, for the most part. We have a two-ton dump truck, but how many couches or chairs or whatever can you get in that dump truck? And is it cost-effective to be doing seven or eight, which is what we do on average a week, and going to one property, picking up the couch or a big bulk item, and then running that all the way to the landfill, and then coming back again? Is that a day-long process? Is that a day taken away from other things that we're trying to do, like sidewalk work, patching? But the other more important issue to discuss is, the more often you have your personnel picking up couches and sofas and stuff, the more likely you're going to have injury. And then you're going to, you're going to lose your employees to the other services that are being provided, that you want to be providing. So then that begs the question of, "Well, we need to get new equipment." Well, what does that equipment cost, and what does it look like? Do we go out and buy a used dump truck, or I'm sorry, a used trash truck? Trash trucks new can be, you know, four or $500,000. Do we want to spend $150, $200 for a trash truck? If, if bulk pickup, if bulk pickup falls on the day when we happen to get a snowstorm, or there's ice, and we need to have the roads salted, what, what are we doing? Right now, if we have a storm that doesn't make the roads impassable, but it still requires our guys to do something, trash is still being collected by the third-party trash hauler. But what if we take that over, and now we're making a decision between plowing a street, salting a road, or picking up the trash, or picking up the bulk item? The type of equipment that you would need, again, is it, is it a, a used trash truck? Is it a new trash truck? If you don't go in that direction, are we riding around with our 25-year-old backhoe and putting more wear and tear on that, riding around town and getting somebody, two of our employees to chain the sofa to the backhoe and lift it up and drop it off the truck? And then what do you do when you get down to the, to the disposal site? Because unless we get it in our dump trucks, nothing has the ability to pull that off. So now you've got personnel lifting the couch up, risking injury, and then you have injury risk, because now they're at the landfill having to dump it. So I don't think that anything is out of the question of what we could do, and I think, I, I know myself from a staff standpoint, and from what I've heard from the elected body, we want to do everything we can to provide the best services that we can for our residents. So that's one option, to pick it up ourselves. The other option is to have a community bulk pickup day. And I think the beauty of Rising Sun's bulk pickup is that if somebody got a new couch, they were only holding on to the old couch for a couple of days, until Friday comes, and they would call and say, "Hey, I have a couch that needs to be picked up." If you're at other communities that do the bulk pickup every quarter or every other month, where you get your couch, now you've got that couch sitting someplace, unless you pay the company that delivered your couch to pick it up. So that's not the cleanest thing to do, because now you have the inconvenience of the residents, you know, holding on to that. The, how they could dispose of that would be to load it up in their own vehicle and bring it to a dumpster, like other bulk pickup is done in some communities, and they would go to a designated location and dump it. You know, some of the obstacles in that is, you want to have that monitored, because you wouldn't want to have the, where our dumpsters are at now are down at the water plant. That's the, the most convenient place, or the best place for us to have that kind of dumpster for people to drop off. But we don't want to have the gates wide open to our water system where anybody could just come in there. It's just not a good practice for the security integrity of the water system. So that would mean you'd have to have an employee there to supervise that and monitor it. The other thing, would, would you want to ask for identification? Would somebody have to prove that they're a resident? If people get wind outside the town that, "Hey, there's a dumpster down at the water plant, and they could drop their sofa off," is anybody and everybody going to be doing that? And then the residents are paying for that service also. So nothing's out of the question, but those are just some of the first, you know, looks into some of the details of the discussion at hand. So with that...
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Would anyone like to speak this evening? Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Water Commissioners. During the period of October 30th through today, we responded to 179 calls for service. There were no notable sprees or, or anything like that. The holiday season's fast approaching. As you know, some of us start with, with Christmas on November 1st. I put up my first Christmas tree November 1st. I'll admit that. So, your shopping season's right around the corner. And during that period, I, I want to make sure that people understand that they are, they should be safe. Just employing a few tactics will help you from becoming a victim of crime. One is to be aware of your surroundings. Don't drive into danger, or don't walk into danger. If something doesn't seem right, go the opposite direction. If it doesn't look right to you, call the police. That's what we're there for, okay? Don't make yourself a victim by going into a grocery store and leaving your purse, your money, your wallet, in your cart, and walking away. Make sure you take your valuables with you. Don't leave your valuables in your vehicle where people can walk up alongside your car and become the opportunist thief, break your window, steal your valuables. I also have a few important dates that I would like for you all to make note of. We will be having a Coffee with the Cop on December 5th at Rise and Grind, which is across the street. It's 8 East Main Street. The times will be from 5:30 PM to 6:30 PM. You get to come out, have a dialogue with myself and other police officers about the incident, about anything police-related in the town of Rising Sun. You get to meet us, interact with us, and we get to know each other, form a, avenue of communication, maybe even a friendship. Lisa? Also, there's approximately 12 million children in this country that struggle with hunger. And I pick on Lisa, but Lisa has a charity that works with hungry children, children in need. And she can tell you just as well as many other people, that if you're working in a school system, Friday's a tough day for you, or any holiday or a long break, because you worry about those kids, and if they're going to have a warm meal while they're away from school. Many kids go to school just for the lunch and the breakfast. So, within the next 10 days, we're trying to, the police department in the town here, yeah, that means you all, we're gathering food to feed 10 families from the Town of Rising Sun for Thanksgiving. I need donations of non-perishable goods. You can drop them off here at the police department. We're going to feed 10 of these families, because when kids get out the day before Thanksgiving, they don't come back until the following su, Monday. That's four days where they may not have a meal. Let's provide them with a meal. I've worked on some partnerships with local commercial establishments in town, and they've agreed to provide some, but I need the citizens' help with bringing in some non-perishable goods. And with that, that's my report, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, could you address, getting a little bit ahead of my thing here, the traffic issue we're going to have in town next couple of days with the water leak that's happening on Main Street? And if anybody's watching the videos, as soon as they come out or something, they'll know that.
Okay. I, I'm not as well-versed as the mayor may be, or Calvin, because I've been in and out all day long. I do understand that we are going to make the repairs tomorrow at some time, I'm not sure of the hours.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting, and there will be a notice, an alert sent out as soon as I get details. Okay? But yes, there, there should be some congestion. Choose some alternate routes during that period. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you. Town Administrator, do you have a report?
Yeah. One of the things on my list is the water, the leak on Main Street. Before I get into the details of what's going to happen, I want to explain the process here. We, we, we've always said, the chief has always said this, "If you see something, say something." So we appreciate residents letting us know, and we depend upon residents letting us know if there's water leaks. But not all water leaks is the town going to respond to right away for a variety of circumstances. And whenever we get, when we become aware of the water leaks, we go out, our personnel go out and they make an assessment. And water leaks that are relatively contained and are, are very slight, we will let them sit for a couple of days, for a couple of reasons. In this particular case, there wasn't a need to go out there right away and jump in the middle of Main Street and work on the project. Number one, because we would have had a heck of a time with controlling traffic. So we, we took the, we took advantage of the fact that it was not a high priority to get out there and do something with that water main, so that we could secure adequate flaggers to be out there tomorrow directing traffic, so that it's as less of an inconvenience as possible. The other thing is, a lot of times when we have a water main break and, and a, or a leak, and imagine if, if you're familiar with the terrain of Main Street, you can have water coming up out of the pavement, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's where the water leak is from. And so you can literally be out there digging, and digging, and digging, and digging, and just guessing where the water's leaking from. So again, since it was not a priority, we take advantage of, or we utilize the services provided by the Maryland Rural Water Association, who has leak detection equipment. And so they're able to come out and pinpoint exactly where the leak is most likely originating from, so that we don't spend as much time digging, we don't do as much damage, and there isn't as much inconvenience to the residents in that. So with that said, we're aware of the water situation, and we've made steps tomorrow morning, as Commissioner Arkden said, weather permitting, to get in there and start doing the work. We are anticipating that this is a minor situation, it's just a small leak, and that the inconve, the biggest inconvenience to the residents is probably going to be the traffic. But again, we're taking steps to have flaggers out there, so that all of our personnel, all four of our people can be working on the line, and not two of them trying to direct traffic, or the police tied up directing traffic. So we'll have all hands on deck doing the work as quickly and efficiently as possible. There might be an interruption of water service to certain portions of the town, but given the history of that particular area, it's not the same as when we get a water leak up here in Town Square that has a tendency to affect a greater range of people. So tomorrow, as we determine where the leak exactly is at, and what the repairs are, we will do as we always do, which is send notice out to businesses and all, letting them know that there might be some interruption. We've already notified the Fire Department and 911 Emergency Services Board to let them know that that situation is pending also. So we'll keep everybody advised. The chief has got to send out the NICSOL Alert System to, to let everybody know what's going on, and we'll continue to post on Facebook what, what we find out, like we've done in the past. The other item that I wanted to talk about is with the Chester Water Project nearing its completion, one of the things that we have talked about in the past is the fact that, like a lot of communities, the Town of Rising Sun uses chlorine as a chemical to disinfect water. Chlorine is the number-one use of, is the number-one chemical used by treatment facilities to treat, or to disinfect water. However, over the years, there has been a, a movement to switch to chloramines. And chloramines are essentially the result of when you add a chemi, certain types of chemicals to chlorine, it creates chloramines. And the benefit of chloramines is that it actually, it's not as dangerous. Anyone who's in the fire service knows how dangerous chlorine can be when you have it in containers, and how you handle it. Chloramines are not as dangerous. So that's one reason why a lot of water treatment facilities are getting away from chlorine. The other reason is that chlorine in the water system has, has a limited shelf life. And anyone who's familiar with that terminology, shelf life basically means how long is it good for? It's like wine sitting on a shelf. How long is too long? Where wine is, you know, starts to turn acidic and is no longer any good. We're not talking about that length of time with chloramines or chlorine, but the concept is the same. And chloramines have a much longer shelf life. And so Chester Water uses chloramines, and many large water entities that have a large infrastructure of water piping will use chloramines as opposed to chlorine. So we are, our drinking water will now be treated by chloramines. As part of due diligence, we are starting a campaign tomorrow, which there will be more information on our website that has fact sheets regarding what chloramine is, why you use it, some of the facts regarding it. So you'll be able to go on our website, there's other entities, the EPA, the Centers for, the CDC, information is in there. So there's going to be a wealth of information that anyone who has any questions about the water treatment process will be able to get that information. We're also setting up an email through our engineering firm that will be able to answer any questions that residents have. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that our town staff is an expert in all of those areas. That's why we have our engineering firm putting these fact sheets together and getting you to the right people who can answer the questions for you. The other thing that is going to be different in our water system, Rising Sun is one of the few communities that does not put fluoride in its water. And I know just from the time I've been here, we've had a lot of residents, and actually the medical community, that has been upset and is actually lobbying. Commissioner Pearson, you remember, in the past, we've had people come forward and ask why we don't have fluoride in the system. Chester Water's water does have fluoride. With that said, we live in a different world today, and people rightfully get concerned about certain things. And there are stigmatisms and issues regarding fluoride that make people uncomfortable. And without giving them the adequate information to ease their concerns, we're just asking for trouble, just putting that fluor, just having the fluoride in the water without giving people a resource to get information. So in addition to the chloramines fact sheet, there's going to be fact sheets on fluoride that can direct you to the EPA and the Center of CDC for any questions that you have. We're still... We're still probably a good 30 days out from getting water from Chester Water, but we wanted to get a head start on educating people about what they might expect to see in the water. If they notice any differences, they could get the information they need. So I just wanted to be on the lookout, starting Thursday on our website, you would be able to get that information, more information related to it.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Moving into the mayor's report, my report is pretty brief. I did want to give a special shout-out to the Rising Sun High School volleyball team. They are at the University of Maryland tonight. They are playing, for my understanding, for the state championship. So, on behalf of the entire board, we send our best wishes to them. I also wanted to give a special shout-out to a lot of Rising Sun businesses that were recognized as Cecil favorites. From Rising Grind was a winner this year in the best coffee shop category. Street Lamp Productions, An Alex Fitness, Freedom Church, Helix Tattoo Studio, Sunrise Hanning were all recognized, which I think is really big, considering that that goes out throughout Cecil County. So congratulations to those businesses. I was also recognized, and without the work of this elected body, that wouldn't have been possible. So a big shout-out to the elected body and to the staff for all they do here at the town of Rising Sun. Upcoming events, we have a Christmas tree lighting that we are gonna do this year, and that is going to be on December 1st. And it's gonna be in coordination with Rising Grind's Christmas market. And then, as always, we will also have our carol sing, which is always the first Tuesday of the month. So that'll be an addition that we're gonna have this year, and we'll have some special attractions that we'll be announcing as we get closer to Thanksgiving regarding the Christmas tree lighting. So that's the end of my report. Commissioner Althanreth?
Just want to thank American Legion, who invited us down for their Veterans Day ceremony. The chief, through Martin Thompson down there, organized that, and we joined him and the members down there for their ceremony Friday night. And it was good to see, it was a full house and an excellent program. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Althanreth, Commissioner Braun?
The Planning and Zoning Board has been meeting twice a month. We continue to meet twice a month, and we've been doing that for well over a year. At this time, we are close to completion of a growth map, and we're doing a final draft of an amendment to the amended comprehensive plan. When both these items are finished, they'll be submitted to the Maryland Department of Planning, and a public hearing will be set up. After that, I'm hoping we'll be able to get into addressing the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Braun. Commissioner Pearson?
On, I had privilege on Friday, November 2nd, the Cecil County Chamber of Commerce has their annual first responders dinner, where they salute individuals who contribute to the police and fire and EMS in Cecil County. And Officer McKinney was Rising Sun's recipient of the year. And again, it was my privilege to give him, present him with the award through the chamber, and hopefully he'll keep up his good work. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Warnock?
I'd just like to, you know, congratulate the mayor and, you know, for all the hard work that we do making him look good. I'd just like to recognize him. But, in all seriousness, it's well-deserved. On the parks and rec front, we actually have, well, weather, of course, being what it is, cold and rainy, we haven't gotten a whole lot done, although Taylor House has gotten a fair amount done on his Eagle Scout project over at Veterans Park. The Gaga Pit is near completion. So I think one of the problems we're having, of course, is it won't stop raining, and it's really hard, like, it's bad enough to work in the mud, you really can't, like, rake mud. I mean, it's just, you can't grade it, like, you just can't finish it, because you can't push a lot of dirt around when it's caked as mud. So anyway, that's a challenge we're having. As we've had all year, we just cannot seem to get ahead of the rain. On the economic development front, we will be here soon pushing to get the Economic Development Committee up and running. We've had one established for a little while, but with the building moratorium, it's, there's not been a whole lot we've been able to do, because there's a limited amount of things that we could do up until this point. But now we're in a position, I think, where we are starting to drive growth. We have actually attended a, two different events that the county put on. One was a commercial brokers event, and the other one was a residential brokers. And the, at the commercial event, we were having conversations with companies to potentially come to, like, the Route 1 corridor as an employment center. And the residential event, we were discussing with residential developers and such, some of the existing plans in town that were, kind of, put on hold because of the building moratorium for all those years. So, we have interest in two of the parcels that were already fairly well along in the process, that would allow some residential growth to start occurring, which is, you know, critical to our, you know, the water sewer rates for the water and sewer system over time. So, kind of how all of us have to work together, and we, I think we, I will say, this board, we do work together well, and consider all the different aspects and how they all tie together, and the importance of each other's departments in working with the other departments. So, with that, I think that's all. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Some important upcoming meetings. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, November 19th, at 6:30 PM. There's another town meeting on November 27th at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission workshop on Monday, December 3rd, at 6:30 PM. And then we have another town meeting on December 11th at 7:00 PM. Upcoming town events, as I spoke, the town Christmas tree lighting is gonna be Saturday, December 1st, and that'll start from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And then we'll have our traditional carol sing on Tuesday, December 4th, at 6:00 PM. Upcoming holidays, we already covered that, which was Veterans Day. And I did want to close with this, and this is a challenge to those of you that may listen to this video. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, on the upcoming meetings, it's worth noting that this year, the November 27th meeting is the week after Thanksgiving. Normally, it's the week of Thanksgiving. We cancel, but it's, the December meetings, aside from the fact that, of course, you know, the first meeting falls on my wedding anniversary, as usual, I don't know how it works out, but the December 25th would be the second meeting, and that one being on Christmas Day, I'm sure we'll be canceling.
All right. So here's my challenge to you. So, on November 25th, from 10 to 3, the anonymous people that give a damn about the community will be hosting a bike drive. It's called Let There Be Bikes, and they are in need of 20-inch and 24-inch bikes. So with the Thanksgiving holiday season coming up, and with sales and deals going on, especially during that time period, think about purchasing a bike for a needy kid. There are 180 of Cecil County's neediest families that this charity helps. Thirty-six alone are from Rising Sun. So that is my challenge to you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.